Well, good to have you with us on this second of our Fall Bible Studies on the Gospel of St. Mark. I'll begin this Bible study, this second one, with a prayer, if you'll pray with me. Good and gracious God, we thank you for the Gospel of Mark, and we thank you for the life and ministry, the suffering and death and resurrection of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Be with us as we study Mark's Gospel. Give us insight and guidance in the name of Christ, our blessed Savior. Amen. Well, just to recap what we talked about last week, and we'll go through this very quickly. You remember that as we look at Mark's Gospel, which is the lectionary Gospel for this coming year, you remember that we said that Mark is, we believe, the oldest of our Gospels, probably around date of around 65 A.D. You remember that we talked about the author of Mark was John Mark, we believe, and he had connections to two of the most powerful figures in the early church. He was, we believe, Peter's secretary, and he was also Paul's companion. And so that links him to both St. Peter and St. Paul. It's pretty lofty company to have a connection with these two great early church figures. We talked about the fact that Mark was writing probably to a persecuted church, perhaps a church that was located in Rome. It was not primarily a Jewish church. It was a church of folks who had been converted from non-Judaism, non-Jewish religion. They had been converted and they had been made Christian through evangelism. We also talked about several themes that are in Mark's Gospel. First of all, that in the Gospel of Mark, we really focus on Jesus' death. Someone described Mark's Gospel as being a passion narrative with a long introduction. A second thing, a theme, is this idea of the messianic secret. Jesus tries to keep His identity quiet, especially during the early part of His ministry. But we, because we have read the first chapter of Mark's Gospel, we are let in on that secret very early. We know exactly who Jesus is. We also know that Jesus is made known primarily through the cross, not through His teachings, not through His miracles, not through anything else. But He is made known as the Messiah through His suffering and death and resurrection. We also talked about the fact that no one, especially the disciples, seem to get it. The disciples are Jesus' best friends, as Liz tells us every week with the Gospel reading. But we also know that the disciples are pretty thick in Mark's Gospel. They just never seem to understand who Jesus is, and they have a way of disappointing Jesus throughout the Gospel. We also talked about the sense of urgency that is in Mark's Gospel, that because it's the earliest, because it's the shortest, Mark seems very intent on getting the Gospel down so that people can have it and read it and understand who this Jesus is. That sense of urgency we talked about is particularly set off with the Word immediately. Jesus doesn't dawdle over anything in Mark's Gospel. He does everything quick and fast immediately. And then we also talked about the fact that because Mark's Gospel is the earliest, there is much that is not in Mark's Gospel that we know from other church writings. There are no Christmas stories in Mark's Gospel. There's no Sermon on the Mount, no Beatitudes, no Golden Rule, no Parable of the Prodigal Son or the Good Samaritan, no Raising of Lazarus. These were things that either Mark may not have known, some stories that Mark may not have known, or for his purpose, they may not have been as important. So we're grateful that we have Matthew, Luke, and John to sort of fill in that gap that Mark was not able to fully provide. We also know in Mark's Gospel that Jesus humanity, the fact that He is one of us, that He is like us, He lives as one of us, that that comes through very clearly in Mark's Gospel. And then finally, the understanding of the Kingdom of God, a kingdom that is ushered in by what Jesus does on the cross, where God's will is fully and finally accomplished. That is a main theme in Mark's Gospel. Mark is writing not a book, not a story. Mark is very clearly writing a Gospel. It is a message of good news. It is the good news of what God is doing for us in Jesus Christ. Mark writes his Gospel with a mixture of tragedy and joy, pain and betrayal and triumph. It is a story that really begins the story of Jesus Christ, but it isn't fully realized until the eighth chapter, when we have Peter's confession, and we have some understanding from the disciples about who this Jesus is and what Jesus' mission and ministry is all about. So we're going to look at some of the passages in Mark's Gospel that are meaningful. Some of these are stories that are very familiar to you, maybe some of the first stories that you ever learned in Sunday School. So we're going to be looking at some of those. And as we do so, remember what the attitudes are from people in Mark's Gospel to Jesus. There's a very popular appeal from the crowd. The crowd seem to be enamored with Jesus. They love Jesus. And then on the other side, there is constant criticism about Jesus. There are Sadducees and Pharisees who don't think much of what Jesus is doing. As we said, the disciples are often in the dark, and they don't understand what Jesus is doing. So it'll be interesting to look at these stories and to kind of see where Jesus takes us in them. The first passage that I want to read for you is, and I'd love for you, if you have your Bible to follow along, is the second chapter of Mark, verses 1 through 12. That is Mark 2:1-12. I can tell you that this really is one of the stories that I remember in Sunday School as a very little boy, hearing this story of Jesus healing a paralytic and wondering about how in the world they would have removed the roof from the house and lowered this paralytic down to Jesus. Of course, we know that houses were constructed in a very different way 2,000 years ago in the Middle East. So hear now this story from chapter 2, verses 1 through 12. "When he returned to Capernaum after some days, it was reported that he, Jesus, was at home. So many gathered around that there was no longer room for them, not even in front of the door, and he was speaking the word to them." Here, of course, we see this very popular appeal that Jesus has from the crowd. Verse 3. "Then some people came, bringing to him a paralyzed man, carried by four of them. And when they could not bring in to Jesus because of the crowd, they removed the roof above him, and after having dug through it, they let down the mat on which the paralytic lay. When Jesus saw their faith, he said to the paralytic, 'Son, your sins are forgiven.' Now, some of the scribes were sitting there questioning in their hearts, 'Why does this fellow speak in this way? It is blasphemy. Who can forgive sins but God alone?' Here, of course, is that view of the constant criticism that Jesus is receiving from the scribes and the Pharisees. Again, verse 8. "At once Jesus perceived in his Spirit that they were discussing these questions among themselves, and he said to them, 'Why do you raise such questions in your hearts? Which is easier, to say to the paralytic, 'Your sins are forgiven,' or to say, 'Stand up and take your mat and walk? But so that you may know that the Son of Man has authority on earth to forgive sins, he said to the paralytic, 'I say to you, stand up, take your mat, and go to your home.' And he stood up, and immediately took the mat and went out before all of them, so that they were all amazed and glorified God, saying, 'We have never seen anything like this.'" This is a marvelous story. I think the focus, you could have the focus, of course, on the paralyzed man. You could have the focus on the scribes who are grumbling against Jesus. Certainly, Jesus is always at center stage in the healing that He does. But for me, in this particular passage of Scripture, I think about the friends, the friends who cared enough about this paralyzed man to bring him to Jesus. And then when they got to Jesus and they saw this tremendous crowd, it would have been so easy to say, "Oh, my goodness, there are too many people here. We really, there's no way we can have our friends see Jesus. There's just such a crowd of people." But instead, they go the extra mile, and they climb up onto the roof, and they dig through the roof, and they lower the paralyzed man right there before Jesus. And Jesus, of course, is just amazed at, and He marvels at the faith, not so much the faith of the paralytic, but He marvels at the faith of those good friends who loved their friend enough to make sure that he had access to Jesus in hopes of being healed. It makes me think of all the people in my life who have had a part in bringing me to faith. I think about my parents, of course. I think about my spouse. I think about my daughter. I think about siblings. And I really think about church members, members that I've had in the three congregations that I've served as a pastor, and the way they have affected my faith in positive ways. My goodness, I could name so many people who were and are members of this wonderful congregation, as well as the other two churches that I've served, who have had an influence in my faith. So in this particular passage, I'd like for you to think about folks who shared their faith with you, folks who helped you on your faith journey, and folks who continue to be an inspiration to you. You may think about pastors, or schoolteachers, or Sunday School teachers, or members of the congregation, or members of your neighborhood, people in your neighborhood, work associates. There's just no ending to the people who might have had an influence on your life. And it is also a good thing for us to remember that you and I are called to be examples of faith for other people. There may be someone in this church. There may be someone in your circle of friends. There may be someone in your family who needs to see and to hear about your faith, and for you to have them, for you to share your faith with them. So in that first reading, I think of all of the anonymous people, all of the folks who have helped us in our spiritual life. Secondly, I'd like to continue with chapter 2, and we're going to read verses 13 through 22. This is the calling of Levi. Levi is also, of course, known as Matthew. Verse 13, chapter 2. "Jesus went out again beside the sea; the whole crowd gathered around him, and he taught them. As he was walking along, he saw Levi, the son of Alphaeus, sitting at the tax booth, and he said to him, 'Follow me,' and he got up and followed him. And as he sat at dinner in Levi's house, many tax collectors and sinners were also sitting with Jesus and His disciples, for there were many who followed him." Here, adulation of the crowd, the crowd, you know, Jesus is very popular with the crowd. Verse 16. "When the scribes of the Pharisee saw that he was eating with sinners and tax collectors, they said to his disciples, 'Why does he eat with tax collectors and sinners?'" Constant criticism of Jesus. Verse 17. "When Jesus heard this, he said to them, 'Those who are well have no need of a physician, but those who are sick. I have come to call not the righteous, but sinners.'" This calling of Matthew is a really interesting story. Normally, with a rabbi, his students, his disciples, were people who were like the rabbi. They had perhaps similar backgrounds or similar interests, similar ways of living. But this is not at all the case with this calling of Levi, with this calling of Matthew. Tax collectors were really unsavory characters. No one liked them. Let's face it, nobody likes to pay taxes. And so they were not popular for that reason. But in addition to being a tax collector, tax collectors in Jesus' day worked for the Romans, who were the occupying power. And so there was a real sense in which they were seen as traitors. And as a part of their tax collecting business, it was also not unusual for the tax collector to skim a little bit off the top and to pocket the money for himself. So those are three pretty good reasons why tax collectors were not viewed in such a positive light. And yet, it is this tax collector who Jesus calls to be a disciple, and who subsequently ends up writing one of the four Gospels, the Gospel according to Matthew. I was wondering if you might think about people who you are in danger of excluding or writing off because they're not seen as good people, or they're not like you. We all have people in our lives who we may not trust or may not like, sometimes just because of what they look like or where they're from. I think the calling of Levi is a real warning to us not to do that, that people are not just who they are on the outside. The most important thing about anybody is what's on the inside and who we are as God's children. So I think this is a wonderful reminder that Jesus gives us today that all people are God's people, and we need to give folks an opportunity. We need to give folks a chance, need to get to know people. And I think particularly in these days in which we live, it's important that we cross some boundaries, that we get to know people who aren't like us, who don't believe exactly what we believe. Right here, a few weeks before the election, maybe to think about folks who are in a different political position than you are, who may not believe what you believe about the issues of the day. Rather than getting involved in a skirmish with them on Facebook or some other sort of social media, maybe sit down and have a socially-distanced cup of coffee with them and enjoy conversation and find out what it is that has them believing what they believe. And you can express what you believe and why. Dialogue, I think, in these days is so very, very important. Let's look at a third passage. Let's look at the third chapter of Mark's Gospel. And we're going to read verses 31 through 35. Mark, chapter 3, 31 through 35. "Then his mother and his brothers came," this is Jesus' mother and Jesus' brothers came, "and standing outside, they sent to him, and they called him." A crowd was sitting around him, Jesus very popular. "And they said to him, 'Your mother and your brothers and sisters are outside. They're asking for you.' And Jesus replied, 'Who are my mother and my brothers?' And looking at those who sat around him, he said, 'Here are my mother and my brothers. Whoever does the will of God is my brother and sister and mother.'" This is one of those passages that has gotten a lot of attention over the years. Jesus almost seems a bit harsh to his mother and to his brothers and sisters, almost like he's ignoring them. That's not really the point of this particular passage. I think the point of the passage is to indicate that Jesus gives us a new family. It is a family that is not based on blood, but a family that is based on water, a family that we become a part of when we are baptized. I had a professor one time who said that families are interesting things. He said, "You know, most of the really good things that happen in our lives happen in our families." And he said, "Here's the other side. Most of the really hard and difficult things that happen to us happen in our families." And I think that's very true. We can experience such joy with spouses, with parents, with children, with siblings. It can be just a wonderful experience. And yet, on the same, in the same way, we know people, maybe we ourselves, who have had difficult relationships with our parents, difficult relationships with siblings, difficult relationships with spouses and with children. And so I think my friend was true. The really good things that happen to us happen in our families. The really hard things that happen to us happen in our families. Jesus is talking about a different family. He's talking about the family that is known as the church. And it's a family that is not based on blood. It is a family that is based on baptism and God's love and God's acceptance of us in our baptism. At a former church, I was in this community and the local elementary school had a wonderful program called Donuts with Dad. And the first time that I heard about it, and they were going to do it, what ran through my mind was that this was a lower-income school. And I immediately thought, you know, there are going to be a lot of children in this elementary school who are not going to have fathers to come and sit down and have a donut with them early in the morning on this particular day. But the school did a wonderful thing. They reached out to men in the community, pastors and attorneys and police officers and firefighters and retirees. And they invited us to come to the elementary school and to be a surrogate father, to be with a child who maybe didn't have a father living in the home, and to fill that role for that morning. Well, my fears of it being an awkward and uncomfortable time for the children were quickly put at ease. It was just wonderful. And we discovered that so many of these children were just eager to have a relationship with a male. And I think about churches today. Churches are those places where we can make a difference in a young person's life. We can make a difference in someone who is the same age as us or someone who is older, maybe someone who is older and doesn't have children living close by. You know, we can help to fulfill that, to fill that emptiness and to fulfill that role. And I think that's such an important thing. Jesus doesn't denigrate the family. Jesus just grows the family and helps the family to be something that is much broader and much wider. So when we come together for worship here, we're worshiping with and eating with and celebrating with people who don't look like us, who may not think like us, may not have the same thoughts about a lot of things than us. As I often say, you know, I'm worshiping with people who are Carolina fans and state fans and Wake Forest fans and UNCC fans. And Liz has given the Wolfpack hand symbol as she's recording this. We're all different, and yet we are all in the same family. It's God's family. And it's a family that is established not by birth, but by rebirth, by rebirth in the waters of baptism. So I think, for me, that's a very important story. The last one that I want to look at today is a parable that Jesus tells in chapter 4. We're going to read chapter 4, verses 1 through 12. My goodness, in Matthew's Gospel, we've been dealing with parables now for weeks and weeks and weeks. And Mark has fewer parables, but some really powerful ones. And that's the parable of the sower. Again, we're in chapter 4 of Mark's Gospel, verses 1 through 12. "Again, Jesus began to teach beside the sea. Such a very large crowd gathered around him, that he got into a boat on the sea, and he sat there while the whole crowd was beside the sea on the land." Very popular teacher. "He began to teach them many things in parables, and in his teaching he said to them, 'Listen, a sower went out to sow, and as he sowed, some seed fell on the path, and the birds came and ate it up. Other seed fell on rocky ground, where it did not have much soil, and it sprang up quickly, since it had no depth of soil. And when the sun rose, it was scorched, and since it had no root, it withered away. Other seed fell among thorns, and the thorns grew up and choked it, and it yielded no grain. Other seed fell into good soil and brought forth grain, growing up and increasing and yielding thirty and sixty and a hundredfold. And Jesus said, 'Let anyone with ears to hear listen.' And when he was alone, those were around him, along with the twelve, asked him about the parables, and he said to them, 'To you has been given the secret of the Kingdom of God; but for those outside, everything comes in parables, in order that they may indeed look but not perceive, may indeed listen but not understand, so that they may not turn again and be forgiven.'" Here again, that idea of the messianic secret, where Jesus is speaking, and we understand and we know, but the crowd doesn't. Again, Jesus wanting to keep that focus on what He's doing later in His ministry when He goes to the cross. Liz has been telling the children in the children's sermon since we've had so many parables recently, that a parable is a story that teaches an important lesson. And Jesus' parables used images and illustrations that would have been very familiar to the people of His day. Telling a story is a very effective way to communicate that. Liz and I, when we preach, we understand that. You know, we may be giving some dialogue, but when we tell a story, it's as if you can see eyes, "Oh, here's something that I can maybe relate better to or understand more." So stories are very, very powerful. In this parable of the sower, some receive the Word, but they have no permanence. The Word has no permanence in their lives. Some receive the Word, but there's no perseverance. There's no holding on to it. There's no discipline. There's no discipline. And some receive the word, but the cares of the world choke it out. I have had so many people tell me recently that they're so concerned about the state of our country, so concerned about the state of the world, even to the point of wondering if these might be the last days. I've had some people ask me that directly. My response to that question is always the same. We simply don't know when the last days will come. The Bible tells us that not even Jesus knows when that day is. Only God the Father. So, if Jesus isn't in on that news, I think probably I shouldn't spend too much of my time worrying about when the last day will come. The Bible says, "That day will come like a thief in the night," which means that it's probably going to be a time when we don't expect it. Someone told me the other day, they said, "Oh, my goodness, things are so bad right now in the world." And I turned things around a little bit, and I said, "Well, tell me a time when things were better. Tell me a time when things were good in the world." And of course, this person named a few periods in time, and I was a minor in history, so I know a little bit about history, and, you know, they mentioned a particular time. I think they mentioned the Eisenhower administration, that things were good and calm then. And I said, "Well, especially if you were white and male, things were good." But I don't know many African-Americans in this country who would want to go back to 1957, when their schools were subpar, when they couldn't take their children to a swimming pool in the community, when they couldn't go into a restaurant and sit down for a meal. Women certainly didn't have the opportunities in 1956 or 57 that they do now. Well, things were really good back in the 20s. Things were simple and easy. Yes, you were in the midst of a Great Depression, where people were out of work and people were hungry and people didn't know if they were going to survive or not. We talk about the coronavirus epidemic now. My goodness, the flu pandemic of 1918 was horrific. Millions died. There hasn't ever been a time when life was not hard, when there were not problems in the world. When those times come, we are mindful of the fact that Jesus promises that He will return one day, and we live every day as if it might be our last day. And let's face it, every day, for all of us, one day is going to be our last day, whether it's because Jesus returns or because we leave this life, we depart this life. So, every day that we live, we should live as if it's the last day. But we don't just focus our eyes on heaven. We also focus here, and we think about ways that we can be help and comfort and strength for these difficult times. Maybe it's to be a peacemaker. Maybe it's to be someone who is brave and strong and confident to a young person and say, "We're going to get through this, and it's going to be okay." I think that we live as Christians with one foot in this world and one foot in the world to come. We keep that balance as best we can. We look to heaven, but we also know that God has given us work to do here and there. So, I hope that this particular passage of, these passages of Scripture have been meaningful to you from Mark's Gospel. We have two more Bible studies to come. I hope you'll join us. We're so appreciative of the gifts and talents of Liz Fisher as she records these and makes these available and for all that she does with our technology in this important time. Thank you so much for being with us, and God's peace.